So, good evening. Now is the time and place for a meeting of the Beaverton Planning Commission. Members of the public can view the meeting by clicking the link in the Planning Commission Agenda webpage, or using webinar ID 1617637242 with passcode 9999999. If you would like to speak during the visitor portion of the agenda, or provide testimony on the agenda item, please use the raised hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in using the 669-254-5252 number, press 9 to alert the chair you would like to speak. For the record, I will do a roll call to verify which commission members are participating this evening. We have Commissioner Winter, Lawler, McCann, and Akall. And Commissioners Glenn Winkle and Ellis are excused and absent this evening. The visitor section of the agenda is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on a non-agenda issue or item. Anyone wishing to speak should indicate this to staff and wait for your name to be called. Does anyone wish to address the Planning Commission on a non-agenda issue? Okay. The staff has stated we do not have any visitors for this section. Commission communication, is there any communication for commissioners? Okay, seeing none, staff communication?
Good evening Chair 9, Commissioners Gianna Fox, current Planning Manager. I have no communications for you this evening.
Great, moving right through. So, the first item on the agenda for this application. First item on the agenda is the application for Greenway Park restroom case file, CU 2022-0010 and DR 2022-0116 and PD 2022-0005. The applicant has the burden of providing that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, Comprehensio Plan, and any applicable Beaverton code provisions. The criteria must address in the hearing that in the hearing are the Beaverton Code Development Code sections, 40.0, 3.1 Facilities Review, 40.15, 15.4, C Major Modification of a Conditional Use, 40.20, 15.3, C Designer 3, and 40.55, 15.1, C Parking Requirement Determination. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the approval criteria or other criteria in the Comprehensible Plan or Development Code that's that the speaker believes to apply to the application. Failures raised in issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the Planning Commission and other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits comments or gives oral testimony has standing to appeal this decision. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court. State and local law require commissioners to make certain disclosures. To these ends, the following questions will be asked. Does any commissioner have a potential or actual conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or site visit to declare? Commissioner Winter? Oh, you're muted.
Thought it was. No site visits, although I'm very familiar with the Greenway Park area because I drive by Greenway a lot. Sheffer Park, same thing. I did not take a specific site visit because I'm very familiar with it, but I've had no contact.
Okay, great. Commissioner McCann?
I did not do, similar to Commissioner Winter, I didn't do a specific site visit, but I use both of these parks quite a bit and am very familiar with them. I had no interactions with anyone and no other ex parte contacts or issues.
Commissioner Lawler?
I have had no ex parte contacts and I have no conflicts, but I did conduct a site visit and I did not interact with anyone at that time.
And Commissioner Akall?
Same, no contact.
Great. Does any member of the audience wish to question a commissioner about ex parte contacts or site visits, or challenge the right of any commissioner to participate in this hearing? And I, before I do that, I will say I have no site visits or conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts. So, does any member of the audience wish to challenge a commissioner? Okay, staff has said no comments, like the records show no response. The order of the public hearing tonight will be as follows. City staff will give a presentation followed by questions of staff. The applicant will then be given 20 minutes for this, for its presentation, followed by the commission's questions of the applicant. Then, members of the public in support of the application can speak for up to five minutes each. Then, members of the public opposed to the application may speak for five minutes each, followed by members of the public who are neither in support nor opposed will then have five minutes each to speak. After public testimony, the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal. The Planning Commission will then hear any final comments from staff. We will now begin with staff presentation.
Great, good evening everyone. My name is Brittany Gada. I'm an Associate Planner in the Community Development Department. This evening, I'm presenting two projects to you. The first will be Greenway Park. The Greenway Park restroom project is application numbers CU 2022-0010, DR 2022-0116, and PD 2022-0005. The Greenway Park restroom project is proposed to develop a new restroom facility and associated pathways within the existing THPRD, Twalton Hills Park and Recreation District, Greenway Park. The project also includes paved pathways and utilities to serve the restroom. This project requires three land use applications. First is the major modification of a conditional use. This is required because the request proposes an increase of more than 10% of gross floor area of the existing conditional use area which covers this portion of Greenway Park. The original conditional use was approved in 1976. The second application is a Design Review 3. This is, this is required because the development of the restroom building itself must be evaluated for building design and other design standards and guidelines. The applicant has chosen to respond to a combination of design standards and guidelines. In this case, the guidelines reference building design and lighting. And lastly, the Development Code does not include a requirement for vehicular or bicycle parking ratios for parks. So, because the applicant is proposing an increase in floor area to a park, a parking determination application is needed to evaluate if the proposed restroom facility necessitates additional vehicular or bicycle parking on the site. The subject site is the existing Greenway Park and the restroom is proposed at the far western edge of the park on a 60.5 acre parcel. The restroom facility is located south of the intersection of Southwest Greenway and Southwest Parkview Loop. It's shown in red here on the graphic. The restroom would be located near existing park amenities, including the tennis courts seen here, and also covered basketball facilities which are at, right at the intersection of Greenway and Southwest Parkview. The site and the surrounding area are all zoned residential mixed-sea. And it's surrounded primarily by detached dwellings, although there is a public elementary school to the south, the Greenway Elementary School, which is within the Beaverton School District Network. And to the east, there are other parcels that comprise Greenway Park, all the way on the other side of the site. The specific proposal is asking to construct a 116 square foot, single occupant restroom building. The building would be surrounded by five-foot-wide paved pathways made of concrete which would connect the restroom entrances to the existing park trail system. The building's primary entrance, seen in the photo here, is providing, which provides access to the restroom stall itself, faces internal to the site towards the southeast. Staff's evaluation of the three applications concluded that all approval criteria have been met. First, for the major modification of a conditional use, it's not seeking to modify any aspect of the original conditional use approval, and the scope is very limited to that increase in floor area for the restroom itself. And staff didn't identify any potential compatibility issues or any negative impacts that, that could be anticipated for the surrounding neighborhoods. The applicant's parking determination application proposes to provide zero vehicular and zero bike parking spaces to support the restroom facility. And the applicant submitted a parking study to demonstrate that no additional facilities were needed, and staff concurs with the applicant's analysis. And we determined that all parking determination approval criteria are also met. For the Design Review 3, the applicant, as I mentioned, is addressing a combination of design standards and guidelines. The design guidelines relate to building articulation and variety, primary building entrances, and lighting. Two of the four building elevations are seen on this slide. The other two sides of the building mirror these with the low slope of the roof on the west-facing side, north, north and west. The building is 13 feet and 8 inches tall at the peak of the roof, and it is made of concrete masonry unit block. And you'll see in this image that there are gray areas for the block and white areas. The gray represents textured split-face CMU block, while the white symbolizes smooth-face block. And the proposed restroom building, in terms of building articulation and variety, uses a combination of doors, windows, the textured split-face concrete blocks, and the pitched sloping roof. And considering the size, the height, the function of the building, staff found that the design guidelines related to building articulation and variety are met by this proposal. Weather protection was also evaluated under the design guidelines, and staff found that the roof overhang is sufficient to protect the building users from rain and sun as required by the guideline. And lastly, for lighting, the applicant proposes wall-mounted light fixtures next to each of the building entrances. You can see a small light fixture in the image here. No other lighting is proposed with this project. And since the existing park is only open from dawn till dusk, and the applicant is proposing that the restaurant follow the same hours of operation, staff finds that this is a unique circumstance which makes compliance with the city's technical lighting standards unnecessary. And staff does find that the lighting design guidelines associated with the project are. So, in conclusion, for the Design Review 3 application, staff finds that all applicable approval criteria have been met. So, in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the Greenway Park restroom project subject to the conditions of approval in the January 25, 2023 staff report. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Do Commissioners have any questions of staff? Okay, I'm seeing no questions. So, we then will move on to the applicant presentation. Who will have 20 minutes, please begin by introducing yourself and sending your name and address for the record.
Good evening Commissioners, city staff, and Beaverton residents. My name's Matt Kilmartin. I live in Twalton at 9960 Southwest Killarney Lane, 97062. I'm a park planner with Twalton Hills Park and Recreation District and the district's project manager for this project. With me tonight for support are two of our design consultants from 3J Consulting, Ashley Doty and Sam Huck, and also my Design Development Manager at THPRD, Tim Bonnen. We appreciate your time and are excited to bring both of these projects in front of you tonight. And with that, I'll jump into our first presentation. Can someone confirm you can see my first slide here?
We see the Greenway Park restroom cover slide.
Thank you. Okay, during the district's recent community visioning process, community members emphasized the importance of adding permanent accessible restrooms to parks. This project is helping the district fulfill that goal in response to the community feedback we received. THPRD and Washington County have been awarded funding through the American Rescue Plan Act, and more specifically, the Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund Grant to add new permanent public restroom facilities to three existing parks within our district to improve the level of service for the community. THPRD has partnered with Washington, Washington County to combine our grant funds with THPRD agreeing to lead the project developments for all three restrooms. District staff has coordinated with our Board of Directors, our management team, and an internal design team to identify park sites within the district having the highest need for restroom additions while offering the greatest benefit to the community and to assess the viability of each site. Some of the criteria we looked at include the site's proximity to existing utilities, maintenance and security access, as well as minimizing site and natural resource impacts. The vicinity map shows the three proposed locations within the district at Hazeldale Park, Schiffler Park, and Greenway Park. I'll note that Hazeldale Park is located at the west end of our district and is within the jurisdiction of Washington County. That project has already received land use approval from the county. Greenway Park, highlighted here, is located in the south end of our district and is part of our larger Fano Creek Greenway. Green, uh, Greenway Park is located entirely within the Greenway Neighborhood Association. It's 87 acres total. And it abuts Hall Boulevard to the north, Shoals Ferry Road to the south, and extends to the southwest Green, uh, Greenway Boulevard to the west. The park was originally planned in the mid-1970s and offers a variety of amenities and recreation opportunities for the community, including disc golf, tennis, basketball, playgrounds, picnicking, art installations, and a plethora of nature and wildlife viewing. We also provide seasonal porta-potties for park and trail users, but currently, there are no permanent public restrooms at this park. A major component of the park is the Fano Creek Regional Trail, which runs north-south through the park and greater Fano Creek Greenway. Greenway Park alone offers over three miles of trails. A neighborhood connector trail extends less than a quarter mile from the park interior to the west end of the park where we're proposing to install the new permanent restroom facility. Here you see an aerial map of the park along with a site photo of the proposed restroom location. We're proposing to locate the new restroom within the open lawn area there between Greenway Boulevard and the internal path system and tennis courts. This location is adjacent to Greenway Elementary School to the south. The site is accessible from the public right-of-way and the internal path system, and on-street parking is provided along Southwest Parkview Loop. Aside from the new restroom and related path connections, this project is not proposing any other park improvements or additional parking. This is a good example of the permanent restrooms we're proposing. This is only an example. I'll get into the specific design elements of our proposal in just a minute, but we have a lot of this style of restroom throughout the park district. The restroom building comes pre-engineered and manufactured by a local organ-based company. Each restroom is delivered as a kit and constructed on-site. The building you see here has two single occupancy restrooms inside, each with their own lockable entry door. This one's located outside our Constoga Rex Anacrotic Center and has been in place for about 17 years. It's still looking pretty good. The restroom proposed at Greenway Park is a little smaller with only one restroom. All restrooms will be gender-neutral and equipped with a flushing toilet, sink, changing table, electric hand dryer, low-voltage lighting, and other standard fixtures. These restrooms will be open to the public year-round, but will be equipped with automated door locks so that each restroom will be locked at night while the parks are closed to prevent illicit use. Okay, the site layout plan shows the extent of our proposed improvements at Greenway Park. The restroom is located to minimize site and natural resource impacts, is near existing utilities for water, electrical, and sewer hookups, and has good maintenance and security access. The building is oriented to face the park interior towards the east-southeast with good pedestrian access from the existing onsite pathway system. We'll repair a portion of existing asphalt paths, shown in blue, and add some new accessible walks connecting to and around the restroom building, shown in green for best access. The restroom will connect to public sanitary sewer, and in this case, will require a permanent utility easement onto the adjacent Beaverton School District property to the south to accommodate this. This slide shows two of the proposed building elevations. The building exterior will be primarily split-faced CMU block with less than 30% of accent banding with smooth, smooth-face block towards the top of the building for visual character and to meet city standards. So, again, similar to the slide Brittany showed you, the darker gray represents the split-face portion of block, and the more white shows the smooth-face banding. The building is equipped with a pitched shed-style steel roof and high windows on both sides to provide natural light inside while minimizing the potential for vandalism. An exterior wall-mounted light is located over the front entrance to provide supplemental safety and access lighting on darker days, but will be turned off at night when the park is closed, consistent with district practices. Greenway Park is open to the public from dawn to dusk, and the restroom will be locked each night during non-operational hours to prevent illicit use of and around the restroom building. The entire building has a CMU block wall, solid-filled reinforced running bond construction to provide a lasting facility with maximized structural and seismic integrity. The proposed 116-square-foot restroom facility at Greenway Park will provide one single occupancy restroom along with a mechanical slash storage room. The restroom facility and path connections will be ADA compliant, and all restrooms will be signed as gender-neutral for the most equitable use by all. The restroom will be operated year-round and will be equipped with both hot and cold running water. The restroom facility will be constructed with durable materials and fixtures to provide a quality facility for years to come and also minimize the effects of vandalism and misuse. THPRD's park maintenance crews will establish a routine cleaning and repair schedule to provide the best standard of care for restroom users. And park patrol will regularly monitor and address illicit activities such as vandalism, dumping, vagrancy, camping, and other security and public safety issues that may arise. All right, I'd just like to touch on the overall project schedule and next steps before we conclude this presentation. Pending land use approvals, we anticipate completing construction documents, construction permitting, and the restroom procurements through this summer of 2023. Then, we plan to bid the project for construction in the fall of 2023 with construction starting in winter of 2024 to complete all three restroom projects by June 2024. And with that, we'll be happy to answer your questions.
Great, thank you. Do any Commissioners have questions for the applicant? No? Well, I can start with a question. Um, where is the nearest bike parking to this facility?
Uh, let's see. I don't believe we have any bike parking in, uh, in the park at all. I'm not sure where the nearest bike parking is. But I'm not aware of any in Greenway Park.
Did you consider adding bike parking so that if somebody wanted to use the restroom, they could lock their bike up?
Um, we did. We have found that bike parking in this park isn't needed as much as some of our other parks. Um, we did some assessment and determined that the bike parking, it wasn't, just wouldn't be needed in this case, wasn't a good improvement that, that we should add with this project.
Okay. Uh, so no other questions from Commissioners? Nope. Okay, well, with that, we can move on to the public testi, thanks for the presentation, by the way. Um, we can move on to public testimony. I don't think there are many people tonight, so I think we will not do it in groups and just take them as they go. So, um, now's the time for public testimony. Shoot, my, um. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate using your raised hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press 9 to alert the chair you would like to speak. I'm not seeing any requests to have testimony. Staff has stated we have no testimony this evening for this application. So, with that, there is no need for rebuttal. So, does staff have any final comments, the application?
Not have any additional comments. Thank you, Chair 9.
Okay. Well, moving right along then. With final comments complete, I will close the public hearing. And as standard procedure, I'll randomly poll the Commissioners to state their conclusions on the application. Um, I'll start with Commissioner Winter.
Uh, this might be one of the easiest applications I think we've had in a long time. It's hard to vote against a public restroom, especially when it's going to be permanent, have plumbing and things like that. I walk the Fano Creek Trail with my dog quite regularly, and we head to the Garden Home Rec Center. We pass Vista Brook Park that has a porta-potty. And when I first saw the headlines of these, I thought they were going to put porta-potties in Schiffler and Greenway, and then I saw it was a permanent facility with running water. I was like, oh boy, hallelujah, those are nice. So, I'm in complete compliance. I'm in complete agreement with this proposal and thank THPRD.
Okay, Commissioner McCann?
Um, I'm, I think partially in agreement with Commissioner Winter. Maybe not all the details that he provided, but I do think it's a very straightforward application and I'm in favor.
Okay, Commissioner Lawler?
I appreciate the Park District addressing some of the issues that were brought up by some of the public comments regarding security and lighting. And so, I think that they've addressed those satisfactorily, and I believe that this project meets the approval criteria.
And Commissioner Akall?
I would agree to that. This is a great addition to the park, having that facility for our communities.
Great, and I also agree with my fellow Commissioners. So, is there a motion?
Yes, I move to approve application CU 2022-0010, DR 2022-0116, and PD 2022-0005 for the Greenway Park restroom, subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report dated January 25, 2023, and direct staff to prepare a final decision in order based on the findings in the staff report and the entire.
Great, is there a second?
I can second that.
Great, thank you Commissioner McCann and Commissioner Akall. Um, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, if not, they, I will do a vote-by-roll call when your name is called. Please say your name. Commissioner Winter?
Uh, aye.
Commissioner McCann?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawler?
Aye.
Commissioner Akall?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so the. And I vote aye as well, so the motion passes unanimously. The planning commission's decision will be memorialized in land use orders that will be provided to all parties that provided oral and written testimony. If you would like to appeal this decision, you must appeal in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Beaverton Development Code and rules of the Land Use Board of Appeals. So with that, we can move on to our second item on the agenda, the application for the Schiffler Park restroom, case file numbers CU twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 nine, DR twenty twenty-two dash zero one one five and PD twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 four. The applicant has the burden of providing that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, comprehensive plan and other applicable Beaverton Code provisions. The criteria that must be addressed in this hearing are the Beaverton Development Code Sections forty point oh three point one Facilities Review, forty point fifteen point fifteen point four point C, Major Modifications of a Conditional Use, forty point twenty point fifteen point three point C Designer Review Three, and forty point fifteen point, sorry, forty point fifty-five point fifteen point one point C, Parking Requirement Determination. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards these approval criteria or other criteria in the comfort of plan or development code that the speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the planning commission and other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits comments, written comments, or gives oral testimony has standing to appeal this decision. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court. State and local law require commissioners to make certain disclosures. To these ends, the following questions will be asked. Does any commissioner have a potential or actual conflict of interest, ex parte contacts, or site visits to declare? Commissioner Winter?
No site visits, no ex parte contact.
Okay, Commissioner McCann?
No site visits. I am familiar with Schiffler Park and go there often. No other conflict of interest.
Commissioner Lawler?
No conflicts, no ex parte contacts, but I did conduct a site visit but did not encounter anyone.
Okay, Commissioner Akal?
No site visit, no contact, no conflict.
Okay, and same for me, no site visit, ex parte contacts or conflicts. So does any member of the audience wish to question a commissioner about ex parte contacts or site visits or challenge right of commissioner to participate in this hearing? City staff has stated that there is no public testimony tonight for this. City staff, so the order of the public hearing tonight will be as follows. City staff will give a presentation followed by questions of staff. The application, the applicant will then be given twenty minutes for its presentation, followed by the commission's questions of the applicant. Then members of the public in support of the application can speak to. I'm just gonna say, members of the public may speak for up to five minutes each. After public testimony, the applicant will have five minutes rebuttal. The planning commission will then hear final comments from staff. We will now begin with the city staff presentation.
Wonderful. Good evening again, planning commissioners. My name is Brittany Gata. Once more, I will be providing staff's presentation on the Schiffler Park restroom project. These are application numbers CU twenty twenty-two zero 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 nine, DR twenty twenty-two zero one one five, and PD twenty twenty-two zero 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 four. At the end of this report, I will be going over several corrections to the staff report, including changes to the recommended conditions of approval. These errors were brought to my attention at just about six PM this evening, so I sincerely apologize that I was not able to prepare a supplemental memo for your review. But the corrections and the associated findings will be memorialized in the land use order for this project following this hearing. The subject proposal, similar to the Greenway Park restroom project, is to develop a new restroom facility, this time in THPRD's Schiffler Park. The restroom facility also includes paved pathways and utilities to serve the restroom. The project requires three land use applications. They are the major modification of a conditional use due to an increase in floor area of over ten percent of the existing park. The original conditional use for Schiffler Park was granted in twenty-ten. The second application required is a Design Review Three, which is to review the restroom building itself and the associated site improvements. And lastly, a parking determination application is required to establish a vehicular and bicycle parking ratio for the addition of the restroom facility within the park. The subject site is the existing Schiffler Park and the restroom is proposed at the eastern edge of the park on a seven point three acre parcel. The restroom is located near the intersection of Southwest Erickson and Southwest Tenth Street. The restroom is located in the area where there are currently portable toilets in the, in the park, shown here as a yellow star on the image. And the applicant proposes to connect the restroom facility to the existing asphalt pedestrian trail network via concrete pathways. The subject site is zoned residential mixed C or RMC and the surrounding area is zoned RMB or residential mixed B and RMC, just like the park. The surrounding land uses are primarily detached dwellings, although there are a variety of uses around the park. There is a place of worship and multi-dwelling residential uses to the south of the subject parcel and THPRD also operates a community garden on the southwestern edge of this park. The specific proposal includes a double occupancy restroom facility that is two hundred and eleven square feet and again surrounded by those paved pathways made of concrete and they are fully accessible. The building's primary entrances that provide access to the two restroom stalls face internal to the site towards the west. Staff's evaluation of the three applications concluded that all criteria have been met. The major modification of a conditional use application also does not seek to modify any aspect of the twenty-ten conditional use approval. And the increase in floor area to add a restroom facility to the park is not anticipated to cause any compatibility issues or negative impacts. The applicant's parking determination application proposes to provide zero vehicular and zero bicycle parking spaces to support the restroom facility, although there are vehicular and bike parking spaces within Schiffler Park already. And staff does concur with the submitted parking study that new facilities are not needed to support the demand for vehicle or bike parking spaces related to the restroom. For the Design Review Three application, the applicant is addressing a combination of standards and guidelines and the guidelines that the applicant has addressed are related to building articulation and variety, roof form, primary building entrances, and lighting. The proposed building elevations are seen here. The proposed restroom building is eleven feet nine inches tall at the peak and it is made of concrete masonry unit blocks similar to the proposed Greenway Park restroom building. The gray blocks represent the textured split-face CMU block and the white is the smooth face CMU block. The restroom building itself is articulated using a combination of doors, windows, the textured split-face blocks, and a sloped roof and staff finds that considering the size and the function of the building, that adequate articulation has been provided to meet the design guidelines. Similarly, weather protection is provided by a roof overhang, which staff finds meets the guideline. And for roof form, the, while the roof is sloped, it does not meet the design standard for roof slope. It is slightly too flat, but as it is not flat and a, quite a small building, staff also finds that the proposed roof pitch meets the design guideline for roof form. And finally, regarding lighting, since the Schiffler Park is only open from dawn till dusk, staff finds that this is a unique circumstance in which compliance with the city's technical lighting standards is unnecessary and that the application meets the associated design guidelines. Staff finds that all applicable approval criteria for the design reviews can be application. So now we'll get into the staff report corrections. The first correction is to a section of the facilities review report, which is Attachment A of the staff report. The changes here are shown in, red text is added and black strike-through text is deleted. The changes here represent a change to the applicant's site plan, which reduced the total grading area and reduced the amount of new or impervious, impervious area. So the total grading area is one thousand three hundred and twenty-four square feet and the newer modified impervious area is nine hundred and three square feet. And this is significant because the threshold for a site development permit is one thousand square feet or greater of new or modified impervious area. So the applicant worked hard to revise their site plan to reduce that number below one thousand square feet so that they would not be required to do a site development permit. Instead, they will be required to do a grading permit. And the next slide goes over changes associated with the difference between a site development permit and a grading permit in the conditions of approval. So I'm not going to read all of this, but effectively the requirements of a site development permit are far more rigorous than those of a grading permit. So the applicant does not have to submit as many documents as, as they would if they were doing a site development permit compared to what they will be required to do, which is a grading permit. So under the Design Review Three application, a couple of conditions of approval are simply modified to specify that the requirement is a site development grading permit seen here in red. A whole list of conditions of approval are deleted from Design Review Three Condition of Approval Section B and E. And on the last slide, there is also an additional condition of approval that needs to be added under the Design Review Three application for prior to issuance of the site development grading permit. These, these corrections and associated findings will be again memorialized in that final decision, decision and land use order for the project following the hearing. And staff asks that if the planning commissioners are supportive of these modifications to the condition of approval that the planning commissioner making the motion reference them when preparing the motion. And in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the Schiffler Park restroom project subject to the conditions of approval in the January twenty-fifth staff report and the and the corrections identified in staff's presentation this evening. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Do any commissioners have questions with staff? Okay, seeing none, we can move on to the applicant's presentation. You can start whenever you're ready.
Great, thank you. All right, I'll just share my screen here. And thank you again. I'm Matt Kilmartin, a park planner with Walton Hills Park and Recreation District and a project manager for this project. I'm located for work at sixty-two twenty Southwest One Twelfth Avenue, Suite One Hundred in Beaverton, nine seven zero zero eight. Tonight, I still have consultants Ashley Doty and Sam Huck available to help me answer questions and my design and development manager, Tim Bonnet. Okay. As with the previous presentation, the Park District is completing three restroom projects. For this project, Schiffler Park is located central to the Park District and is within the southern portion of the Central Beaverton Neighborhood Association. Schiffler Park abuts southwest Bertles Avenue to the north, southwest Bonnie Bray Street to the south, and southwest Erickson Avenue to the east. You can see the orange dot in the east portion of the park representing our proposed restroom location. With a photo, we intend to replace these seasonal porta potties with the new permanent restroom. The site is accessible from the public right-of-way and the internal path system and on-street parking is provided nearby along Southwest Erickson Avenue. On-site parking is provided in the southwest corner of the park off Bonnie Bray Street. Aside from the new restroom and related path connections, this project is not proposing any other park improvements or additional parking. As with before, this is a good example of the restroom we're proposing. This one is a little more accurate because this shows a two, single occupancy restroom building, which is what we're proposing at Schiffler Park. Again, that's a two-room, single occupancy restrooms. Okay, so this site layout plan shows the extent of our proposed improvements at Schiffler Park. The restroom is located to minimize site and natural resource impacts, is near existing utilities for water, electrical, and sewer hookups, and has good maintenance and security access. The building here is oriented to face the park interior towards the west with good pedestrian access from the existing onsite pathway system. We'll repair a portion of existing asphalt path here shown in blue and add some new accessible walks connecting to and around the restroom building shown in green for best access. This slide, this slide shows two of the proposed building elevations. The building exterior will be primarily split-face CMU block with less than thirty percent accent banding of smooth face block towards the top for visual character and to meet city standards. The building is equipped with a pitched shed-style steel roof and high windows over each front door to provide natural light inside while minimizing the potential for vandalism. Exterior wall-mounted lights are located over each front entrance to provide supplemental safety and access lighting on darker days but will be turned off at night when the park is closed, consistent with district practices. Schiffler Park is open to the public from dawn to dusk and the restroom will be locked each night during non-operational hours to prevent illicit use of and around the restroom building. The entire building has a CMU block wall, solid-filled reinforced running bond construction to provide a lasting facility with maximized structural and seismic integrity. Very similar to the restroom at Greenway, except that again, this one provides two single occupancy restrooms along with a mechanical slash storage room. This restroom is two hundred and eleven square feet. And the restroom facility and path connections will all be ADA compliant. All restrooms will be signed as gender neutral for the most equitable use by all. The restroom will be operated year-round and will be equipped with both hot and cold running water. Restroom facility will be constructed with durable materials and fixtures and to provide a quality facility for years to come and minimize the effects of vandalism and misuse. THPRD's park maintenance crews will establish a routine cleaning and repair schedule to provide the best standard of care for restroom users and park patrol will regularly monitor and address illicit activities such as vandalism, dumping, vagrancy, camping, and other security and public safety issues that may arise. We have the same schedule for all three restroom projects and again, the goal is to complete all restrooms by June of twenty twenty-four. And with that, we'll take any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do commissioners have any questions of the applicant? Great, thank you. Do commissioners have any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Lawler?
Thank you. I'm curious about the, well, your, the image of the existing porta potty showed some vegetation between the, that facility and the south property line. And I was wondering if that vegetation will remain with this project? And that's really my question.
Yeah, I might ask one of our design consultants to chime in here, but I, we're not planning on removing any trees. We may need to, to remove or adjust some of the vegetation between the restroom and the lot line. But if Ashley or Sam would like to chime in on that, maybe a little more familiar with the, the design needs there.
Hi, I'm Ashley Doty with Three J Consulting. We will be affecting some of the shrubs and hedges and stuff that are directly surrounding the existing porta potties. But as Matt mentioned, we are not going to be affecting any trees.
I'll add as well that that property there now is owned by the Park District.
Oh, okay.
And at some point in the future, we hope to incorporate that into the area of the park itself.
Okay, well, that really helps because it, it looked like it would be very close to that property line, and my thought would be to add some, you know, some sort of a vegetative barrier. But if the Park District owns it, then I think that my concerns have been addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant from the commission? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the public testimony portion of the meeting. If you would like to speak, for those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate using your raised hand feature in the Zoom menu bar. If you're calling in, press nine to alert the chair you would like to speak. Staff has stated we do not have any public testimony. So I will move on. There's no need for rebuttal. Thank you applicant for your presentation tonight. Any final comments from staff?
I do not have any final comments to add. Thank you, Chair.
Great, thank you. So with final comments complete, I will close the public hearing, and as standard procedure, I'll randomly poll commissioners to state their conclusions on the application. I will start with Commissioner Akal.
I don't have any consent.
Commissioner Lawler?
I think it meets the criteria for approval, so I will be voting thusly.
Okay, Commissioner McCann?
I, I agree with Commissioner Lawler. I think this looks like a good application. I don't have any concerns.
Okay, Commissioner Winter?
Yes, it beats all the criteria, and I think I I echo my comments from the Greenways.
Great, thank you. So with that, do we have a motion?
Sure. I move to approve application CU two zero two-two dash zero 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 nine, DR two zero two-two dash zero one one five, and PD two zero two-two dash zero 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 four for the Schiffler Park restroom. And subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report that stated January twenty-five, two thousand twenty-three, and including the corrections that were noted in the staff's presentation today, February one, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. And I direct staff to prepare a final decision in order based on the findings in the staff report and presentation and entire record.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second?
A second?
Great, thank you, Commissioner McCann and Commissioner Lawler. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, I will take a vote by roll call. When your name is called, say aye or nay. Commissioner Winter?
Aye.
Commissioner McCann? Commissioner Lawler?
Aye.
Commissioner Akal?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So the motion passes unanimously. The planning commission's decision will be memorialized in the land use orders that will be provided to all parties that provided oral and written testimony. If you would like to appeal this decision, you must appeal in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Beaverton Development Code and the rules of Land Use Board of Appeals. So with that, we are adjourned at seven twenty-six PM. Have a good week. See you guys next week.
Great, thanks.
Thanks.